Going toward Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, October 24th.
Four o'clock.
And so here is the afternoon session. How about a roll call, see who's here?
Definitely Chair Dawson.
Here.
Vice Chair Blue.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman. Commissioner Latessa.
Here.
Commissioner Silva.
Here.
That is the full commission today and for staff, we have Community Development Director Cole, City Attorney Davi, Planning Manager Hill, Associate Planner Bugger, Recording Secretary Cleary, and Administrative Assistant Argon Bright. And I will also take this time to announce that members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10 second delay and Comcast Channel 25 with up to a 90 second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join this meeting using Zoomer by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four toll free. Once again, to join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four toll free. If that phone number doesn't work, please try another. There are more listed on the meeting agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. Then you'll need to type in the webinar ID one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. Once again, the webinar ID for this meeting is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide a public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off computer or TV speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There's a three minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within that limit. Thank you.
Okay. I'm opening, opening the consent agenda. The only, on a consent agenda, we have the minutes from the last meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to comment or pull an item on the consent? How about a, how about a?
Move to accept.
We'll do accept.
Second.
Second here. Can we have a roll call on that, please?
Yes, and I just want to point out that there are no hands raised in online or in person for public comments. And for the roll call vote, we have Chair Dawson.
Here.
Vice Chair Blue.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries and the minutes are approved as submitted. Oh, and we can move to public comments for items not on the agenda. So once again, to join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. The telephone number to call is eight three three five six eight 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 six four and the webinar ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. No hands are going up online or in person. For public comments, not on the agenda.
No action?
Yeah, no comments.
No comments. Okay, so there's no one in the room here wants to comment on on items that are not on the agenda? No. Okay, so going forward, public appearance. Looking at. Recommend to the city council approve amendments to the city zoning ordinance to authorize and regulate a limited number and type of cannabis businesses and rezoning multiple parcels to include a cannabis business overlay district. Do we have a staff report on this, please?
Yes, sir. I will share my screen. Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Buggert and I'm an associate planner with the city of Monterey's Planning Division. And today we're here to talk with you about cannabis business overlay districts and recommending two resolutions to the city council. The recommendation from city staff is that the planning commission adopt resolutions to one, recommend that the city council amend the city code chapter 38 to authorize and regulate a limited number and type of cannabis businesses and rezone multiple parcels to be included in a cannabis business overlay district. And two, recommend the city council accept the associated planning office determination that the project is exempt from CEQA per Public Resources Code Section 21083.3 and State CEQA Guideline Section 15183. Some background on this project. Starting in September 2020, the city manager's office initiated legal, fiscal, regulatory, and operational research into pursuing the cannabis businesses in the city. On September 30th, a cannabis cannabis policy framework was delivered to the city council study session. And on December 1st in 2020, a roadmap to cannabis was also presented to city council. And I'm going to briefly go over what that looks like. It started with creating a starting point, receiving public input, gauging the public's interest in this, conducting background research, including legal considerations and ramifications of implementing the program. A decision point based on that input, identifying a consensus and seeing if they would move forward at all. The consensus was reached and we are now in the prepare for launch phase. That included, that includes drafting regulations, conducting associated environmental review and what level. And researching cannabis retail selection processes, what would be involved in an application, what it would look like when people started to apply for a cannabis business license. Moving forward from here is launch. If there's a consensus, we would then issue the permits, that is after adoption of the regulations at the local level. And then monitoring and regulating, seeing if there's any loopholes involved, monitoring the operators, collecting revenues and managing any potential community impacts that occur. And finally, based on those community impacts or loopholes, reviewing and revising the ordinance as needed moving forward. That public input was launched January 7th of 2021. It included the launch of a city project webpage on Have Your Same Monterey and an online survey. There were two public town hall meetings, January 26th and 28th to solicit additional input and on March 10th, those results were compiled and presented. As consideration of the public input, there was a cannabis retail zones meeting on April 13th. And on May 4th and August 17th, the city council grouped it all together and provided initial direction to city staff, which initially included one to three retailers with the possibility of including Cannery Row and the Monterey County Fairgrounds at some point in the future. December 21st, 2021, the city council directed staff to develop those regulations and launch on preparing the documents and research and consider potential cannabis, a potential cannabis retail tax as part of last November's election cycle. In July of last year, the city council placed the cannabis business license tax on the November ballot. And on November 8th, the license tax called Measure J for the election passed with more than 65% of voters approving the measure. Based on all that, there was a project description that was needed for assessing what level of environmental review would be required. And a project description was created and presented to city council on May 2nd and on June 2nd, they approved the project description and with that also included some adjustments to the May 2nd one, which included allowing two cannabis events at the Monterey County Fairgrounds. It'd be temporary event permits and two allowing a additional retail, so a fourth retailer on North Fremont Street between Airport Road and Pallaverde Avenue. I have a little asterisk here because I'm going to come back to that item in just a moment. The ordinance itself covers a wide range of topics. It's 30 something pages or so. And it covers the types of licenses that would be allowed, the number of licenses, the location and operating limitations and application materials. So what the city would need to see from applicants for them to potentially get a spot. With regards to Planning Commission and purview, while the amendments include everything within chapters 1, 7, 19, 22, and 38, the Planning Commission primarily oversees the city zoning ordinance, which is chapter 38. And planning commission review is required for those updates. The full ordinance itself is included, included in attachment two. The updates to chapter 38 specifically for planning commissions review is included in the first attachment. Parcel rezoning. This is the overall map of the four jurisdictions that the cannabis would take place in. This is where the asterisk comes into play. This map was included in your staff agenda materials and there was a slight error in there that has since been updated on the next slide. And that includes one VAF parcel in the downtown area and a adjustment to the North Fremont area. The direction from city council was between Airport Road and Pallaverde Avenue, and this goes far beyond that. And so that was updated as follows. So these are the four areas that we're going to be looking at today.
Um, excuse me, but is there four areas shown on that map?
There is. So there is a, there's an orange, I'm, I'm going to walk through each of these just briefly, but there's one. Uh, there's an orange one in the upper left. There's a green one in the upper left. There is a yellow one in the lower left. And there's a purple area in the lower right. And we will zoom into these in the next few slides. So these are the four areas. They would be designated CB 1, 2, 3, and 4 as an additional overlay at the end of zoning for each of these areas. And you'll also note at the end of this, the red lines are where storefronts would be prohibited. Moving through the different portions of the map, we have the C2 parcels along Wave Street, which would be called, uh, under the overlay CB3. And also there would be parcels within the lighthouse specific plan area. And the lighthouse specific plan area includes both Lighthouse Avenue and Foam Street. These two locations came about through the extensive public input and city council consideration of how many where. And that's what is before you today. There are gaps within here and those gaps include parcels within the coastal zone, which includes the parking garage along Wave Street. There's also parking associated with a hotel along here. And a few more VAF parcels along here. And there's also the the center along Lighthouse Avenue, which when you put on the spot, you forget what the name of it is, but the it's, it's our community park area over here. The red lines are where storefronts would be prohibited and the intent from council for that was so that those who park further up on the hill and walk down to Cannery Row wouldn't necessarily be seen directly into those doors as, as you walk down. Additionally, frontages would not be allowed to face the recreation trail for similar reasons. The second area is CB2, which is downtown. Similarly, frontages were not recommended to be along Alvarado Street. Direction was that no frontages face Alvarado Street. There are a few gaps over here associated with VAF parcels as well. And Jack's Park is this white area here where we would not be having cannabis. The fourth area would be CB4, North Fremont. And this includes the parcels between Pallaverde Avenue and De La Vena slash Airport Road here. And the white gaps here are the number of VAF hotel properties along North Fremont. I will note that those previous maps included the parcels that would receive the new overlay. This map here is provided for informational purposes and would not be codified as part of the ordinance. Uh, the ordinance includes a exclusion area based on state law where there can be a 600 foot buffer from sensitive sensitive receptors. Sensitive receptors include daycares, schools, and youth centers. And for all three of these, we defer to state definitions and state law regarding what those are. And the reason I wanted to say this is tentative is because if a school closes or opens, it may change over time. Findings. Planning Commission must find that zoning regulation amendments, including this rezoning, is consistent with the policies and purposes of the general plan, zoning ordinances, specific plans, and zoning districts. Each of the four areas allow for commercial uses, retail uses. That includes lighthouse, downtown, C2 parcels, and the North Fremont planned community. Staff found that it would be consistent with the purposes and policies of each of these governing districts. And the ordinance would support local interest and commercial business diversity. Environmental review for the project, since it's focused on retail, the city staff found it to be exempt from CEQA. A exemption review included as Exhibit A to Attachment 2 was prepared and found it that the city's general plan EIR adequately addressed the majority of potential impacts, 17 of the resource areas, and that no impacts peculiar, peculiar to the project were substantially more severe than those identified in the general plan EIR would occur. With that, the recommendation from city staff is that the planning commission adopt the two resolutions to recommend the rezoning to city council and accept the planning office determination of CEQA exemption. That concludes staff's presentation and we are here for any questions.
Any questions for Matt?
Terry. So just a few questions, you know, this, these documents seem so well vetted. You know, they've certainly been reviewed really thoroughly, but just a few questions. So the, the way on appendix A of, of listing all of the parcels that are going to have re's, they're going to have their actual zones re titled to include this, this one R description or yeah, cannabis one R description. Uh, it seems so cumbersome. Is that the way we've always done these overlays is where you end up with these, it just seems like, I don't know how many parcels are on these 13 pages of parcels, but it's a lot of them. It seems prone to error. And I didn't, I wasn't to go through that list and see which ones were on there, which ones were wrong or right, but why not just have a map with a clearly defined boundary and, and, and say the, you know, I, I guess it's because of all the VAF parcels and so that's my question is, it seems like this listing of all the individual parcels and sort of attaching this cumbersome zoning to them is, uh, it just seems like a lot. Is there an easy, isn't there an easier way to do it?
I will first say that I know that there were a number of different ways that it was considered, but for that specific question, I would like to defer to legal, if that's possible.
So we have a number of overlay districts in our zoning code currently. Some of the ones you might be familiar with. So whenever we rezone a property to H1 or H2, that changes the base or the zoning of the property. So it'll be like R1, H1. We also have it for emergency shelters. Um, if you remember a few years ago, we had to rezone by law to allow emergency shelters. Most, a lot of the commercial properties in the city have an ES designation as well. And we have a multi-family overlay district on Garden Road. So this is a fairly common zoning tool. I'll say the one thing that I find helpful is that the property owners know exactly when they click on GIS and they click on their zoning, it's right there, what all the letters are. And then that corresponds to our zoning code. So we find it a useful tool. And I, I haven't found it to be cumbersome.
Okay. Thank you. So what if a parcel on North Fremont is approved? And they actually install a retail storefront cannabis operation there? And somebody wants to build a school within 500 feet of that location? I guess they'll be told no.
So in this situation, they, if the state law prohibits them from opening there, then they'd be prohibited, but it won't stop a cannabis operation. So it's whoever gets there first.
Okay, whoever gets there first. Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you. Let's see, the last question is the so there's one non-storefront uh, delivery operation allowed in the city.
Yes.
And on attachment one on page four under B2, I'm wondering if, can you put that up in the screen? I just thought maybe that could be clearer. Uh, what was the page?
Page four. Of attachment one. It's the resolution.
So you got to pack a page?
Oh, no, I don't have that page. Yeah, that's be close. Keep going. Okay, I, I think it's okay, so let's see, that's B2.
One non-storefront cannabis business is permitted in any?
That's so that's it. So.
Okay, I will blow this up a little bit.
But I, I think it's okay. There are a bunch of other places where it's, it says one is allowed in the entire city. But I, I was wondering whether that sentence could be read that of the four of, of the four sort of zones that, I don't know, that, that, that could be interpreted as, as one in each zone. Uh, I, you know, I'm, I'm being just picky. You've done a great job on this. So I was thinking that that number two there might say, you know, for the entire city. It's probably not necessary.
At 10.
Right. I know that's what it means.
He was wondering about adding clarifying language.
I don't know, maybe.
If it was from out of town, it's different.
Yeah, I know.
Different story.
I'm, you know, I'm probably just being overly picky here. After reading all the stuff, I know there's just one allowed in the entire city.
And isn't allowed to serve the city or is it allowed to be located in the city?
Both.
Both.
Could be in your garage, really.
Not his garage.
My garage. Well, if it were in the overlay district, it could be in any property in the overlay district, right?
In any. In any cannabis business overlay zone. So one is allowed in any of the four overlay zones.
I just wanted to throw that out there in case the language of that seemed like that, that might indicate four rather than one. And you, Zach, I'll just mention it and you can deal with it if you want. I don't, I don't think it's, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thanks.
Any other questions for Matt?
I have one question. You may not be able to answer this, but you know, we've gone a long way from middle of the pandemic when this began to today. And do you know what the other contiguous cities, Marina, Seaside, Civic Grove and Carmel have done with their cannabis um, retail operation?
We had a few conversations with Marina and specifically Seaside. Is there a particular aspect?
No, I mean, have these other cities gone ahead and developed an ordinance and a retail uh, presence?
Yeah. Yes, uh, both of those jurisdictions, sorry, I thought my, my was on, uh, both of those jurisdictions do have a ordinance in place and have operators up and running. We had a, a few conversations with them about in particular, the application process. There were some that did a lottery format versus um, a, a ranking format and, and the one that's in our ordinances is the one that we feel most comfortable with.
Okay.
No mess. Okay. So, so are we looking for a, a a uh?
So we'll need to open it up for public comment. If there's no further questions, Bruce staff.
No further. Actually. So Matthew, um, can you provide a little bit more detail on how the process is going to take place to reassess? The the new code um, for lessons learned. And it's part of the process that was discussed earlier, but how are we going to actually go about making sure that we can take care of problems as they come up? What's the strategy there?
Yeah. So one feature of the code uh, of the proposed ordinance is that operators need to renew annually. And uh, there, I'm not sure if there's any sort of other trigger other than the annual update or, or general enforcement that is needed.
That any change, plus any change. Any changes would automatically.
Yes, a change to somebody's uh, proposed operation.
So one of the items in the ordinance is an inspection process. So um, in fact, we were discussing today. You know, how frequent are we going to make those inspections? But there's an inspection ability. And we plan to inspect. Um, so for compliance with conditions of approval and um, so it's a little bit more rigorous, I would say than our normal review of some businesses. So there'll be a, a competition, if you will, to see they'll submit uh, applications. And we only accept one per business district. So it's not like we're allowing thirty of these facilities in the city. The city council will ultimately select those businesses through that process. They will then um, submit for their zoning approvals. And then there will be um, inspections also required.
Does that include if there's three submitters in one district?
Yeah. So we could have fifteen in one district and we're only going to have one.
It's gonna be a lottery?
Council chooses.
If you want, yeah, I'd like Ms. Stavi to explain the, the process.
So the, the applications are all going to go through a, a vetting and ranking process. And in the top four will be eligible for a cannabis permit. And then it's going to be, I believe, first come, first served um, for a zone clearance. So and this is a part of the social equity component that we built into the ordinance. So there was the theory that um, more wealthy cannabis industry people might have already secured a location in advance to the city even legalizing cannabis. And then those that don't have the resources to hold on to a piece of property or pay or have the networking connections, let's say, might be disadvantaged by that. So we built in a requirement or not a requirement, we don't require that there be a location established at the time of application, but you do need to have an application and go through a zone clearance process. And in that, if applicant number one um, finds a place first in Lighthouse, then number two and three and four have to look in the other zones for a spot. If there's two people at the same time, I believe we're going to have a lottery. Um,
correct. So um, we will accept applications for that business district. Uh, so they have gone through this process, then we'll have a sort of a hat and then opens, uh, we will pick out of the hat. And that first um, group will be able to secure their location, will complete the zone check and um, because it's really difficult if we have everyone wanting to go into one district, how do we handle that?
I have a question. On the construction of the facility, you're going to cover that separately in this presentation?
Construction of.
Well, safety features built into the facility. Are we going to cover that separately?
Because so you, uh, you're asking if there's any building permits associated with new construction or?
Well, these are unique facilities. And one of my concerns is we're seeing smash and grabs. That's conspiracy of a group of people to rush a business, break counters and steal everything they can. There are certain things that you can do to lessen the threat. I just wanted make a discuss, part of the discussion what those could be. We have two architects on this board and other experiences. So oh, three, three now. So that's why I, I thought that this would be a, a perfect opportunity to discuss some of those concern.
There, there are requirements from, at the state level for, for security. And they're also incorporated into our, our ordinance, at least regarding surveillance. And and
We did read your material. That's why I generated this concern.
And, and lock and key. Portions.
Can I make a reservation about your comment? Um, I drive down Del Monte and uh, Canyon Del Ray all the time. There's a cannabis dispensary kind of near there on the corner in Seaside.
One of them just closed.
Yeah. And for first, I guess, going back to the, at least the pandemic. I never went inside, but I would drive by and see what was going on outside. There would always be a line of people waiting to get in with either a bodyguard or a bouncer type guy at the door, which seems to imply that that's how they're taking care of the volume of people that come in. And so to answer your question, that's really more of an operational issue that would be best handled by the individual operator.
I've also just out of concern, watched these operations in that same manner. But one of the things when we started having these rashes of smash and grab, I looked at it from that perspective as well. And, and a, a flash mob can show and be in within sixty seconds. And that is a concern because if you'd go, you do it into a and a, some kind of a store, that's one thing. When you look at the amount of stuff that you steal to make up to a thousand dollars, that's, that's a lot of hauling. A marijuana shop, that's pretty small. So to me, a flash mob going into a marijuana shop, that's a very serious concern. Um, one of the issues that I have with that is I don't know what the state requires as far as a door goes.
Yeah. So in the ordinance, there's section uh, for retail and testing laboratory operational requirements. So these are the types of items that the applicants would be expected to demonstrate in their application to the city through that vetting process that um, the city attorney was just speaking about. So these all um, fall into the category of operational requirements for them to demonstrate to the city before being selected. Uh, the purview of this commission is the zoning overlay portion of the ordinance, uh, rather than operational specifics.
The, the doors I've saw on, on these shops are typically glass doors. And that's part of my concern. A smash and grab is in the term. So to me, the idea with building in two locked doors and you, they, so that you can't have two open doors at the same time. So if one of them is open, people go in, they, they lock that one, then they open the second door. And that goes along with what, what Peter was explaining on how people go into these businesses, typically one at a time or a couple. So when I look in here, we have to identify everybody going in. That would seem logical to do the two locked doors and not just glass doors. I'm sure the architects can, can address the issue, what kind of doors? I, it's a serious concern of mine. I don't, we have, I haven't discussed it with anybody else at this point, but that is a concern.
So as Chrissy's pointing this is writing this down so that we'll uh, we'll be able to remember it later. Um, are we done?
I am.
Okay. Um, public comment. Whether, whether in the room or, or on the internet.
I see hands raised online. But just a reminder to join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. To join by telephone, dial eight, three, three, five, six, eight, 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 six, four, toll free. Then enter the webinar ID one, six, one, nine, nine, zero, eight, zero, three, nine. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Um.
We actually have someone in the audience would like to speak.
Perfect. We can allow them to go first. That's fine. Please state your name for the record if you feel comfortable doing so.
My name's John Rico Carr. Hello, commission members in the public. My name is John Rico Carr. I founded and operated My Caregiver on Lighthouse Avenue back in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. It's good to hear the city is finally getting around to licensing cannabis retail and events. But when I emailed Hans Uslar inquiring about cannabis licenses, I was told the city is not meeting with any potential applicants. If that was true, how was the determination made for Cali Roots and the Rebels and Renegades Festival to be given the only two event licenses? For those who don't know, my caregiver provided the first controlled medical cannabis area inside California Roots back in two thousand and ten. This city never intended to allow my right to the city's administrative procedures and went so far to violate government code and fraudulently conceal those violations. What all will hiding the true facts from the Court of Appeals, myself and the public. This city never intended to hold my administrative appeal to this planning commission in abeyance, though represented to do so. I've been defrauded out of thirteen years of progress within an industry that today makes millions, if not billions of dollars. I am left with no other option but to pursue legal action. So I've initiated legal action against the city of Monterey and several past and present staff members who participated in the deprivation of myself and those who needed cannabis as medicine. The city of Monterey criminalized me and all the medical cannabis patients of California. All will violating government code. In two thousand and ten, the city misrepresented and weaponized a prohibition moratorium urgency ordinance, ignoring the fact that the ordinance of, ignoring the fact of ordinance number three, two, one, six and three, two, one, eight, which had already established a moratorium on medical marijuana dispensing facilities in nineteen ninety seven and ex, and expired in nineteen ninety eight without any further prohibition. After which medical marijuana dispensing facilities like My Caregiver was, was allowed in the city without any regulation or control. It's time for this city and these individuals to admit to their mistakes and find a way to put my caregiver and I in the position we would have been if not for their actions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Do we have any, do we have any hands up?
Thank you for your comment. There are a few hands raised online. The first with their hand raised was EM. You should be allowed to unmute yourself now. Please state your name for the record if you feel comfortable doing so.
Good afternoon, everybody. Esther Malkin, president of Laguna Grande Neighborhood Association. I submitted an email that unfortunately I didn't get in in time, but luckily I just logged on in time to um, tell you guys my comment, which is um, I have nothing against um, cannabis sales in general. Although I do feel that the market is oversaturated and not a good idea to get into it now while they're all losing so much money. But that aside, I want to make sure that the overlay does not put cannabis um, retailers near neighborhoods. There are three adjacent neighborhoods on North Fremont. And there are spaces that are not near homes. And in my opinion and other residents, the cannabis stores should be treated the same way when it comes to proximity to neighborhoods as it is to schools. The residents as well as children that are still, you know, going to be going to those schools, live in these areas. And so the same um, exact uh, policy should apply to neighborhoods as well. Um, I realize that the city wants to make as much money as possible on this, but this side of the city, three neighborhoods put up with a lot already from the festivals that go on already at the fairgrounds, which are now going to be adding additional ones. And we are the ones that feel the repercussions. So at the very least, we ask you to exclude our immediate residences from the overlay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next hand raised is Richard Roscello. You should be able to unmute.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. Richard Roscello, president of the Casanova Open Neighborhood Association. I want to praise the city staff. I did contact them about inconsistencies in your staff report. They fixed it. And they uh, they addressed our issues of all three neighborhoods on North Fremont. And the properties I see on the map now are the appropriate ones that are not adjacent to residents. So I'm praising them for making that change and presented it to you. There's a long history in the marijuana industry. In nineteen ninety six, California legalized medical marijuana. In two thousand and sixteen, they legalized recreational marijuana. In nineteen ninety six, the first dispensary was the one at Canyon Del Ray and, and Fremont. And that is still there today, Del Ray Farms. So that was the first one. Now, two or three dozen dispensaries later, we have an oversaturated market. Two dispensaries just closed, one on Broadway, one in Moss Landing. And I'm not quite sure how many are closing in Salinas. But I estimate half will be gone within a year. That's how bad it is. The economics of the situation is you cannot cut a pie in that many pieces and anybody survive. So picking the location on North Fremont is critical. If you look at the marketing economic study that was done five or six years ago, and it said that the main market for success is in the visitor area, uh, Canary Row and downtown. So North Fremont is dubious in that there's so many adjacent dispensaries in Seaside. They've already approved over ten applications. That's all going to be taken out by the market. But But closer to the fairgrounds, more chance of success. You should be talking about ingress and egress and adequate parking and the security issues. When you finally come, the staff comes down to making their ranking. It is important so that impact doesn't spread over to the residents of Monterey. And I do appreciate your time. And the council meeting when people, council members are hip shooting after public comment, some of the ideas aren't practical. But hopefully at the planning commission, you can iron through these. I do thank you for your time. And please approve the map as presented to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. That was the last hand raised.
Was the last hand raised?
Yes.
Okay. How about comments from commissioners?
I'll start. I think this has been a process that has gone back quite a number of years. There's been a tremendous amount of input. Resources putting into this. City staff a lot of time on the part of putting the the report together, staff report together. It's extremely thorough, and I think it encompasses all of the priorities and goals the city is trying to achieve here. I don't have any any exceptions to it. I commend city staff for its very thorough report. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Mike?
I agree with a lot of what he just said. The voters changed the law to allow it. So that set the tone. We just follow what the law says. I do have my concern of a couple of areas, and I appreciate that this report with the overlay shows. I had a long conversation with Richard prior to this meeting. He called me and wanted to express his thoughts about the area that we go back to specific plan, North Fremont specific plan, had concerns where businesses were adjacent to residents.
Right.
There's only one part of the North Fremont specific plan and the overlay where there is none, and that's from Cassaverty down to the Travel Watch. Not counting the hotels, that it's basically two large parcels. Which we always thought that that would be great for this type of a business proposition. Everywhere else. Bruce Lane was declared in the specific plan a special consideration area. Because you have the traffic right against the back of the house. And you have people overlooking the house. That was the concern of the neighborhood, going back to the specific plan and continued on this topic. The others that don't care, I was glad that Esther called in for her neighborhood. Because that's we have to make this progress. My concern is still the security of this this business. I've seen robberies of these places and of these type of facilities and other places. Some of it including violence. I'm just trying to keep it as safe as possible. Because it in a lot of places that it is the two-way locking, two-locking doors, but you can't go straight through. And they also have people on a monitor and physically monitoring it so that we we can keep it as safe as possible. Thank you.
Yeah, I was online to follow up with Sandra's comment about a potential business that could be based out of a garage. I was just thinking that yeah, if that really isn't covered, is it possible that we could just require it to be in a commercial business? And so we don't have somebody using their garage for doing retail through the mail or through Uber type processes? Catalog business? Yeah.
Yeah, as mentioned earlier, these these applications will go through a very thorough vetting competitive application process. Then applications of that nature would not be scored favorably.
And you need a special permit to have a business out of your, out of your private residence.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Really? I thought they dispensed with that requirement. Where you can still have, you can have a business running out of your home and in prior years, you had to submit an application and you know, you got approval, but I thought they dispensed with that during the pandemic.
Not a business of this nature.
Okay.
So any comments?
No, this is thoroughly presented, and I think contingencies have been anticipated. And I do think that that thing that you mentioned, Robert, is of concern. The garage business, but if the bedding process is so stringent, then maybe that won't happen.
Yeah, I'm in support of this resolution we're going to be doing here. Very thoroughly considered. I have no, no concerns.
Yeah, I also want to compliment the city staff for being so thorough on this. I mean, and the city council, you know, they took this really seriously. And it shows in the ordinances that they produced. It's it's funny when you think of it, you know, four storefront and one non-storefront, that's five businesses in the city. And all of this work, you know, it's for this, these, it's not really. But I mean, I don't know how many liquors or stores there are in the city of Monterey, but it's way more than that. And I don't think there's anywhere near the address in the in the city ordinances for that business use. So it's it's super thorough. And one last thing is that the, you know, eighty years ago, it used to be Carmel by the Sea, Pacific Grove by God, and Monterey by the smell. So I guess we're bringing that back. Now that the sardines are gone.
Canary Row. Okay, so can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. The planning commission recommends city council approve amendments to the city zoning ordinance to authorize and regulate a limited number and type of cannabis businesses and rezoning multiple parcels to include a cannabis business overlay district.
I'll second that.
Second by Dan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Dawson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher? Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latessa?
Yes.
Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion it carries and it is not appealable because it is already going to the city council.
And we would need a second motion for the adoption of the other resolution for the sequel portion.
True.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the second resolution. Second.
Second by Peter.
That the ordinance is exempt from sequel.
Yeah, that's what all that paperwork was.
Okay.
For the vote on this one, we have Chair Dawson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth?
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latessa?
Yes.
Commissioner Silva?
Yes.
Thank you. That also carries.
Okay, so seeing no more action here. We can adjourn
Order Planning Commission Monterey, California is Tuesday, October 24th. It's seven oh four and we're back in. We have continued public comments. Is there anyone in the audience or on the internet that would like to make a public comment on things that aren't on our menu today?
First, I would like to call the role one more time, just at the start of the session.
Okay, fine.
Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Luke.
Here.
Chris, your breast field.
Present.
Chris Fletcher.
Here.
Chris Freeman.
Here.
Chris Latessa.
Here.
Chris Silva.
Here.
Thank you. That's a full count. Sorry, full commission. For staff, we have planning manager Hill, associate planner Buggert, and myself, recording secretary Query. I will also take this time to announce that members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings. Via Zoom, that is your service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10 second delay and Comcast channel 25 up to a 90 second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoom or by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four. Toll free. Once again, that phone number is eight three three five six eight 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 six four, and it is toll free. Then enter the webinar ID 1619908039. Once again, the webinar ID for this meeting is 1619908039. If the first number does not work, there are more phone numbers listed on the meeting agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Other commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There's a three minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within that limit. There are no hands raised for public comments not on the agenda. Oh, there is a hand raised. I mean, Brandon Robinson.
Yes, present.
Thank you. You are live. Please present your comment.
I have a comment regarding 95 Press Scott. I am the president and founder of Tipsy Putt. We are an indoor mini golf restaurant that applied for a sign.
I'm sorry, there will be a time later on in the meeting when we discuss that item, when you will be able to comment on that item. And that is after that will be one of our last items today. As of right now, we can only take comments on matters not on the agenda. And no hands are up for that.
Is anyone in the the audience want to make a comment that's not for on a subject that's not on our agenda tonight? No? Okay. So I'm going to go to consider 420 Tyler Street use permit application amendment application PA 23-0203 to allow continued operation of a nightclub restaurant major applicant Ken Lesiak owner Igor Garbage. Uh, let's see, example from some sequoia. So that's a we have a stamp report on that, Mr. Matthew.
You do indeed.
You do indeed. I will share my screen. Good evening. My name is Matthew Buggerton. I'm an associate planner with the city of Monterey's planning division. And today we're here to talk about not 95 Prescott first. Excuse me. About 420 Tyler Street for a nightclub use permit at today's planning commission meeting. Uh, some background on the project. It is located at 420 Tyler Street. On this parcel is the Golden State Theater. And there's a restaurant at the rear of the parcel. It has a commercial land use designation and the zoning is PCD, which puts it in the plant community downtown specific plan area. With H1 zoning, which is. Historic significance. The proposed use is continued operation of a nightclub. It is currently called Compact Disco and the owner Ken Lesiak. And there is a previously approved permit from September 2020. Under resolution P 20 dash zero one four. And that permit included operating hours for the establishment. Sound control conditions, including modifications to the entrance door and. Curtains over the windows and complying with noise standards. It's a middle of a security plan review through the police and fire department. And it also included a trial period condition. And I have an asterisk here because I'll be talking a little bit more of it on it on a future slide. In general, the nightclub restaurant major use is complimentary to surrounding uses in the downtown specific plan area. The trial period condition stated that after 12 months. The, a public hearing would be necessary and scheduled with the planning commission. To evaluate compliance and consider extension of the use permit for additional time. Or deny the use permit or require additional revised conditions. Since it was approved in 2020 and one year later was 2021, there have been both the change of ownership of property. And the change of ownership of the restaurant itself. And this was not carried out. That said. All of the other conditions as a part of the use permit have been carried out. They've, they carried out the noise conditions. There have been zero recorded issues with the establishment after checking in with police and fire. It is continually operated as a nightclub. And both fire and code enforcement recently inspected the location to make sure that everything was up to code. So essentially this permit amendment is to satisfy the trial period condition a little bit late. And continue operation of the nightclub. The location is behind the Golden State Theater. Uh, there is a primary door and a side door in the rear for, for exit. And it's located just off Alvarado Street in pretty much the heart of our downtown area. Findings, the zone downtown specific plan allows for a variety of permitted uses, including restaurant major. And under restaurant major, it includes a nightclub item and it's allowed with a conditional use permit. The proposed project would not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare. They have. Proven this through not having any major issues at the establishment and meeting all of their conditions. Provides entertainment opportunities for residents and visitors. And the proposed use will comply with any condition as listed in the conditions of approval. The recommendation from staff is that the planning commission approve the use permit with the previously approved conditions absent the trial period. With that, that concludes staff's presentation.
And questions for Matt?
The applicant is here in the room as well.
No, no, no. And why is this, why is this? Uh, absent the, uh, the. Trial period.
Yeah. So the permit amendment was. It's being considered a permit amendment because one of the conditions is no longer applicable. The trial period is ended, so that trial period would be removed. It has not been. It has not been. Our usual approach, once the trial period is ended, we, we let the use permit go. And that initial 12 month period is to make sure that they've met the initial conditions.
Gotcha. Thank you.
This was continued ownership through COVID?
It was a change of ownership.
So it should have initiated this new process then.
Yeah. Um, the, so use permits run with the property itself and not the ownership of the property. So.
But when it changes. The use permit is also needs to be changed, correct?
No, the use permit is a land use entitlement, so it stays with the property regardless of ownership or transfers of ownership.
Okay, so that had nothing to do with, with this issue. But is that when the 12 month review process normally kicks in?
So the 12 month review period is from the time of its original approval for the next 12 months. Uh, it was in that 12 months that their COVID-19 happened. And the change of ownership, obviously city staff changed the way they were operating during that time and it was an oversight essentially. Yeah.
Clarifying thing.
Yeah, no problem.
Peter? Nothing?
Nothing.
Oh, nothing? Okay, um, I guess that would be a good time for the applicant to.
You're here?
Yeah.
Hi folks. I just want to introduce myself. I'm Ken Lesiak. I just look forward to doing business in the city and I hope you guys can come by, check out the disco.
And any questions of the applicant?
I have a question.
Right. I'm not familiar with your business at all.
No.
And I'm curious as to what type of entertainment you provide.
Uh, Wednesday through Sunday, we have DJs that come in from around the world. Um, the music is very specific style of dance music called house music. Not to be confused with like rave music or EDM. More like adult contemporary dance, I would call it, like along the lines of like Boskags and almost like yacht, like yacht rock.
Yacht rock.
I know.
Got it. Okay.
Any other questions for?
Yeah, and when the use permit came up the first time, it was going to be a tapas bar.
Yes.
And are you, is that what you serve this top?
Actually, I, I've had a lot of experience with bars. I've had six in my lifetime and I've never operated a kitchen, so we've yet to figure out what to do with our kitchen.
Did you say?
We've tried tacos.
Tapas.
I don't, I don't know what, yeah. I don't know what we're going to settle on, but tapas sounds good.
So you aren't, are you, but you're in business now.
Yes.
So people are just coming to drink and dance.
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Good happy hour, four to seven every day.
Did you hear that, town?
Oh, it is like a free ad, right?
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, so, yeah, any questions?
No, no, no.
Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Um, no any other questions? I can't believe it. What do we do? Should we, uh?
So.
Well, let's make a motion.
Open it up for a public comment.
Comment, public comment. Anybody, anybody out there?
Are you catching up? Um. I do not see any hands raised online. The phone number to call is eight three three five six eight 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 six four. And the webinar ID is 1619908039. I see no hands raised.
No hands raised?
No, not in the chambers or in, um, on Zoom.
Okay. Um, okay. Well, commission comments.
This is an easy one. Well, it's just easy. I, I'm going to vote for this. Definitely to say, aside from that little hiccup.
Terry?
Yeah, I'm in support of the project. It seems, um, the only thing was there was a, some work to be done on the door. I assume that shows up in the conditions.
Yeah.
Uh, so it seems pretty straightforward. I, I will support the item as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I make a move?
Move.
All right. I move to approve 420 Tyler Speed Street. Use permit amendment application PA 23 dash zero two zero three to allow continued operation of a light nightclub restaurant major. All second.
Mike? No. Peter, I just had one coming. I said, I'm very impressed that a, that a bar downtown. In, in three years has no complaints.
Yeah.
That's very positive.
Well, it's yacht music.
Or, uh, okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. Uh, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Blue.
Yes.
Chrisher Brassfield.
Yes.
Chrisher Fletcher.
Yes.
Chrisher Freeman.
Yes.
Chrisher Latassa.
Yes.
Chrisher Silva.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries unanimously and the decision is appealable to the city council within the next 10 days.
Congrats.
Well done.
That was quick.
Okay, let's go to item number five. Consider 95 Prescott Avenue application AP 23 dash oh one nine nine. Appealing Architecture Review Committee Resolution A 23 dash oh three one approving sign permit. SI 23 dash oh one seven three for two wall signs, one projecting sign and one hanging sign. Appellant Marco Ospina, property owner Canary Row Company. Okay, so we have a staff report?
We do indeed. I will share my screen. Okay, uh, today we're here to talk about 95 Prescott Avenue sign appeal AP 23 dash zero one nine nine at today's planning commission meeting. The recommendation from city staff is that the planning commission deny the appeal and uphold ARC's resolution A 23 dash zero three one. Subject property is near to Canary Row. It's in the old Center Harbor Brewing Company building on the northwestern side of the city. And it's at the corner of Waven Prescott and Prescott and the Recreation Trail. So it's sandwiched between those two. Some background on this project, the existing signage that is still on the building was approved in April of 2010. For the Canary Row Brewing Company business, and it also included some architectural adjustments at the property. A use permit was approved earlier this year. For a new Tipsy Putt business, a combination mini golf and brewery. In fact, that use permit was actually 2022. That was last year. And they've since completed a number of internal renovations to the space to be a combination mini golf brewery, three story. Experience. Uh, ARC approved the sign permit and on September 20th. And ARC approved four out of the eight originally proposed signs. Here are the number of signs that are currently on the building. There are 13 here. There are a number of slides in this presentation, and so a few of them I'm going to move quicker through, and then there's some summary slides at the end. So the five signs that are not included here include both window and wall signs along the street. Uh, the pedestrian view and they've proposed replacement of the signs that are further up. First off is the projecting signs here associated with the keg signs. The face of the sign, both of these are internally illuminated. The face of the sign would be replaced. And they would not alter the existing kegs or the casing that's there. They would replace just the internal face of the sign with a Tipsy Putt sign here with the slogan Drink Local Put Tipsy. And it would be internally illuminated, uh, similar to how it is today. Additionally, there is an entrance sign and this entrance sign. Would be replaced with a Tipsy Putt sign like this with halo illuminated letters. Uh, that is to say the letters will be raised off of the green portion of the sign and illuminated at night like so. This is also similar to what is there today, just with different color schemes. Also, there's a hanging sign to the far left, uh, closer to the recreation trail. And that sign would be updated to a hanging wood appearance sign with a gooseneck lighting, shielded lighting. There is a wall sign on the barn door facing Wave Street. And this painted on sign would be updated with a wooden. A wooden sign mounted onto the wood here. The two decals across the roof of the building. Uh, currently say Canary Row Brewing Company established 2010. And it would be updated with, and the inspiration was based on the Monterey Canning Company. And it would be updated with Tipsy Putt Canary Row here. Um, during the architecture review meeting, there was a discrepancy. Uh, where the staff report and approved signage included decals at the property. And there was a notion, uh, from one of the commissioners that it may be painted on the building. And it was a little unclear of what it was, since it's a historic building, it is an adhesive on the side of the building and the. The Canary Row like brickwork that shows through there is actually printed on that adhesive. And that was not originally proposed as part of the applicant's proposal. They have since revised since ARC to have this. It like this, uh, this is what's existing on the building as a decal. Um, it's not actually brick, it's just older. And they are proposing a similar aesthetic to the lettering up there to try and match it. Also facing Prescott Avenue. It would be updated to Tipsy Putt Canary Row with similar detailing on the sign. On this side of the building facing the recreation trail. There, this is all of the existing signage that you can see from this corner. Uh, the signage that wasn't really pointed out in the other one is this projecting sign up here and. This wall sign facing the internal patio as part of the approval in 2010, they didn't consider it a sign facing the recreation trail. They considered it facing the patio. So again, those would be removed. And this sign down here, uh, facing the patio would be updated to a wooden. Uh, similar to what was on the other side of the building, a wooden sign on this side. So here are each of the eight sign locations. And the applicant proposed these eight signs. A1, A2, B, C, D1, D2, E1, which includes just the one here and E2, which just includes the one here. And it's a total of 384.22 square feet. It is a reduction in square footage as to what was previously proposed. Um, there's up to 260 linear feet of, of building there. So under our sign ordinance, it allows up to 260 square feet of signage. This is in exceedance of that. And again, this is because they were intending to replace signage that currently exists on the building. ARC approved four of these signs, which includes the projecting sign facing the corner of Wave Street and Prescott. And does not include the sign facing the recreation trail and. Included in their condition was the removal of those keg signs facing the recreation trail. The wall sign above the entrance, the hanging sign closer to the recreation trail and the wall sign facing Wave Street. I have put together some very rudimentary sketches. I have put together some very rudimentary sketches of what this all looks like together. Um, this is what is currently there. This is the applicant proposed signage that would be on the building. Roughly. Um, with the roofline, wall sign, projecting sign. The sign and the hanging sign. And then from this corner, a wall sign, the existing projecting sign. The interior wall patio, this hanging sign and the wall sign. Um, obviously, a couple of these are duplicates going on. A R C approved these four signs, so the hanging sign over here, a wall sign here, this projecting sign and this sign and. I eliminated the sign up on top. I will say that A R C did not provide direction regarding that signage. There was some discrepancy whether or not it stay on the building, uh but it wasn't included in in the conditions. These are the four that were approved on the building. Also, the removal of this uh the keg sign over here. So in total. Hundred and sixty-five linear feet of frontage, I think I said two hundred or uh two hundred and sixty-five linear feet of frontage. The applicant proposed three hundred eighty-four point two-two square feet and A R C approved eighty-point five-four square feet. So there was a reduction in total amount allowed signage on the building. And the conditions that A R C put on the project were to remove both of the one hundred and thirty-five square foot wall signs near the roofline. I'm. I suppose what I said on the earlier slide was not true. That was part of their conditions to remove that signage along the roofline. So it wouldn't have the Canary Row. Uh, Brewing Company. To remove one of the wall signs, the one facing the patio, and to remove one of the projecting signs, the barrel sign near the Recreation Trail. So the total reduction being. Approximately three hundred square feet of signage. Findings necessary for approval are that. The signs would achieve the purposes and objectives of the sign ordinance. That it would not result in a proliferation of signage and that the signage would be equitable. Uh, staff did not find that there would be a proliferation of signage under either proposal as it would be a reduction from what was existing on the building. However, staff did not find that it would be equitable because it. Would be a lot of, it it would be signage in exceedance of the sign guidelines. Uh, the. A second finding is that the signs need to be consistent with the guidelines. Or A R C determines the proposal better achieves the purpose and objectives and strict application of the guidelines. This is the mechanism that allows A R C to allow greater signage. And what has applicants uh apply for for signage that may not perfectly fit into the black and white. Sign guidelines that we have. Uh, after the. Conditions, the signage would be largely consistent with the guidelines. And I will note that A R C allowed one of the signs, the projecting sign facing Wave Street and and Prescott. To be slightly larger than typically allowed because if you shrunk it to the guidelines, they'd have to reduce the size of. What's there and they just wanted to replace the face. And third, the proposal is consistent with the general plan. It's substantially consistent. It supports the existing slash proposed. Commercial business. Um, their opening date is supposed to be soon. The opponent letter and and the applicant will look likely expand on this. Um, generally. Stated that the original proposal is a reduction of signage. Uh, they did not want to leave the prior roofline signage as they find it misleading. And asking for signage. They are asking for signage that represents the company and is appropriate for the building. Planning Commission options, you may deny the appeal, which would uphold. The A R C approval. You can approve the appeal, allow the signed proposal in full, or modify the conditions or amount of signage that's allowed, or you may continue the item. The recommendation from city staff is to deny the appeal and uphold A R C's. Uh, approval of the four. The four signs. The applicant and or the appellant and the business owner, I believe, are both. Online for. Uh, probably some. Some statements and available for any questions, and we are of course available for any questions you may have.
I have a question.
Thank you for sitting through that.
On the original. Brewing company signage, how did, what were the findings for that to be approved?
So staff's initial. Recommendation. Was to eliminate much of the signage on on the building and to only allow those that. Fit within the side on in the sign guidelines. I think it's included as attachment to in the. In the staff report. Um. And A R C. Along with H P C, that is a note. Um. Decided that the proposed signage was fine for the building considering its size. Um. Also that the. That the signage fit the aesthetic of the building. They have a few specific findings that are in there, which I can pull up, but essentially they allowed the additional.
The original signage. And signage ordinance change from the original. Signage from the brewing company to now.
There were.
I understand. I mean, if I was putting up signage, I would assume that I would at least be able to have what's on the building. So. Where did that disconnect? Is it just a fresh uh A R C's interpretation there?
Essentially, yes. Uh, as Matthew pointed out, the um. The A R C, the sign, the sign ordinance does uh give a little flexibility to the A R C. To approve signage that exceeds the uh strict uh numerical uh limitations of signage. Um. Well, as Matthew pointed out, at the staff recommendation at that time was uh was not was to uh. Limit the amount of signage in that proposal, um but the A R C uh chose to approve it at that time. Uh, and it is worth noting that a lot of the A R C is is a different. Different group.
Mr. Mike?
Yeah.
Mr. Mike?
We look at Canary Row in historical context. Um, before it was the Monterey Brewing Company circa. Two thousand and ten, which is not historic. What was it before? Was the name of a building have his historical significance?
Well.
I can pull up that. Historic report.
If you could.
Oh, yes, can see these report.
Didn't see it.
Yeah.
Talking about nineteen forty.
It does, it has to.
It's it there.
There was an Irish bar.
It appears it was a former fish rendering facility.
Well, that's way back. That's in the forties.
In the forties.
It was a um. Processing plant where they were converting fish into some type of meal. Yeah.
I cannot see in this.
Prior to the brewery, it was, it says latest occupant of the building, uh. With a restaurant.
Can't see and hear any historic writings on the building, going back to the forties.
Uh huh.
What we aim for is historical. Um. And I, in my my way of counting, it says four signs, but I see five. Because you're putting the same same sign on two sides of the building. That was four and five in my mind. One, two, three. Four, and you count two as one. I don't, that's. Is that?
Can we, can we go back to the? Yeah. I'll pay R C approval.
Not the way I I went to school.
Sure, there may be a. Just misunderstanding. We'll go back to this line.
Um, yeah, see, it it's the same sign on two sides.
Yeah.
Yes, A R C only approved one of those. So the one you're looking straight at in this photo. Um, can we go to the one, the A R C approved slide?
The kegs.
Yes. So the one, the one straight ahead is the one that was approved. If you look in this image over to the left, the that one's not approved.
Two at the top are not approved?
They were not, not by A R C.
That's all right.
So this slide right here shows exactly what A R C did approve. So Matthew, can you just run through those four? Yes, so there's one projecting sign here, one hanging sign here. And then there are two wall signs, one that's located.
Yeah, that that counts before it. That's why I was confused.
Yep.
But you showed the illuminated one. Showing.
Yeah.
The new. And I, that's why it it threw me.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question about numbers. Um.
This.
So. I think that the applicant has cheated himself out of a hundred and eighty square feet of signage. By. If he. If eighty-point five-four was approved. Did I not just hear you say that they would be allowed under regular circumstances and following the rules, two hundred and sixty square feet?
That is correct. There was no discussion at architecture review regarding continuation or redesign.
A building this size, you would think that they would want to take advantage of the maximum. Icarus. The maximum square footage, so a hundred and eighty square foot. Based on what A R C approved, has not been used.
Left on the table.
Have been left on the table. Yes. And the other thing is, is just following on what Mike said. In many historic buildings. They love to put the old historic sign at the top to remember what it was. In nineteen hundred or eighteen fifty. And that wouldn't take away from the uh. Tipsy putt, there would just be a marker, an historic marker that wouldn't.
Yeah, we have Bank of America building. It's not Bank of America anymore, but.
Exactly.
So just a point of clarification. Uh, so the applicant has requested two hundred and or three hundred and eighty-four square feet of signage, which actually exceeds the. Amount that they would be allowed. The A R C um has to approve all sign. Uh, permit applications. And they have the uh authority to restrict that amount further. So it's not that the applicant has chosen to request less signage than what they're allowed. It's that the Architectural Review Committee chose to approve a lesser amount.
Okay.
I'd like to get clarification, just. Me to reiterate, so when the. Sign program for the brewing company was approved. By the city, ostensibly by the A R C way back when. That met the sign ordinance at that time.
It did not.
It did not. And what was the conflict at that time?
The similar conflict to what is now where it was the amount of signage on the building. And in fact, there was some discrepancy about the illumination method as well, but. Um, what is existing now was. What was approved.
But nonetheless, the city did eventually, despite the fact that there was a conflict with the sign ordinance. The city nonetheless approved the amount of signage for the brewing company.
Correct, which is why they are referred, yeah, which is why they're side sign guidelines as opposed to standards.
Correct, okay.
Hmm. So Matthew, the, I just want to be. Sure, I understand this. I think you mentioned earlier that it was not clear what A R C approved for the banner signs at the top of the building.
I will say that is my error. The. Condition that was included was the removal of both of the one hundred and thirty-five square foot wall signs near the roofline. Um, there was some back and forth as to whether the signs stay.
Mm-hmm. So the decision the A R C made was to remove. One of the two. Banner signs at the top of the building.
It was to remove both of the banner signs at the top, in addition to the removal of the. Uh, the keg projecting feature facing the rec trail. And, yeah. And the removal of the wall sign facing the patio.
And staff's recommendation was to have one sign, one banner sign up. On that or, and then they decided just to make it, take both off?
Staff's recommendation was based on coming into conformance with the guidelines. And the one hundred and thirty-five square foot sign, the maximum wall sign size that you can have is fifty square feet. So the one hundred and thirty-five square feet did not. Meet that standard and having a fif- fifty square foot sign up there. Um. There's actually a number of reasons why the wall signs weren't allowed, because there's only one true entrance to the building.
Mm-hmm.
We allow up to two wall signs per storefrontage. And so staff recommended two, and the two were the one above the entrance and then. One of the other wall signs that was not the one hundred and thirty-five square foot sign. If you refer to table two in the staff report, uh. There's a consistency table, and it will highlight uh the areas of inconsistency with the applicant's proposal. Staff tends to take a rather conservative approach when reviewing these types of applications. Tries to narrow our review as closely to the guidelines as possible, uh knowing that the A R C has the ability and flexibility to approve beyond that. Sure. I have a few questions. So the 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 big one hundred and thirty-five square foot signs that are there right now that are decals.
Mm-hmm.
They, to measure the one hundred and thirty-five square feet, you basically create a rectangle over that entire. It's not like the. The area of the individual letters. It's a big rectangle. Yes. And even though the there's brick, you know, the. A bunch of that hundred and thirty-five square feet is actually the brick behind it. Um, just to clarify. And then the other sign that's that didn't get approved, that's that's a kind of, we haven't even discussed it. It's a minor one facing the rec trail. Is there a prohibition against signs? There used to be a prohibition against signs facing the rec trail? Yes. Did that come into play at all? Yes, and. To maintain consistency with. What staff determination has been in the past, what A R C's determination has been in the past. That sign. Was considered to be facing the interior patio. There are standards for signs. Facing the rec trail, which includes a maximum square footage of. Approximately three square feet. Okay. Um, and. And since it did not fall under that umbrella. It. Those standards were not looked at. Um, it was considered at A R C that there are, there's glass there, so you can still s- see it within the. Within the area from the rec trail. Um. But how how it's written and has been executed in the past.
And the keg sign, um. Is that not facing the retro? I know it's on the angle, the where the building comes together.
So the.
Marshall, it's in the corner.
So yeah, as Matthew said, so it technically doesn't, neither the patio sign nor the keg sign. Meet the technical definition of fronting on the Recreation Trail. However, A R C, in looking at the intent of not allowing signage along the rec trail. Did view both of those signs as essentially fronting on the Recreation Trail, which is why they chose not to approve those. So while the one was considered to be a patio sign with the patio enclosure being glass. They felt that it had the same impact as a sign that did front on the rec trail. And they fell similarly to the keg, uh, the keg sign.
And staff. Agreed with that approach with um A R C? Or was your original recommendation that that was not?
Our our interpretation with the, neither one of those uh. Fronted on the recreational trail. And. Staff did not take the position that they were fronting the recreational trail. The reason for the removal of the other project of the kegs. Facing the Recreation Trail was because our sign guidelines allow up to one projecting sign and. There's two. So our initial recommendation was the removal of one. And it's also technically supposed to be within ten feet of the public entrance, which is closer to. The Wave Street side.
Right. Um, okay, I I have to admit that uh I was on the A R C. When we approved those signs.
Mm-hmm.
And I think. Someone else was.
Five out of seven, I think the listeners were on the A R C.
At that time, and I remember, I remember defending the the banner sign because just across the street. There's a huge banner sign right at the top of the building. And I said, A or B, you know, and so. Um. We did, I did, uh, I do remember this very well. Yeah, Monterey Cannon Company, there you go.
But that Monterey Cannon Company is historic sign.
Yeah, well, it's it's old. And then there was the, then there was the uh. The artichoke, what, what was that?
Oh, the great artichoke.
Great artichoke.
Artichoke.
On the next corner down.
Yeah. And that's the projecting sign on the corner was going to be. An artichoke mounted on a column. Use your imagination.
Yeah. Oh, funny. But anyway, I I do remember this this project and uh. And I I did defend the uh. The the banner signs because there's a banner. And I I did defend the uh, the the banner signs because there's a banner sign right across the street and uh. But but there's so many signs on this, on this building. I mean, how many? Eight signs, something crazy. That when you look at, when you look at it from above, it's like. All the way around, all the way around the building. So something's got to be done about that. I just don't feel. Um, is this, is this something that we might want to uh continue?
Well, we definitely have to let the applicant.
Well, we we're not deliberation.
Well, actually, actually, this is the moment to be asking questions of staff, so we're kind of toeing that line between deliberation and question. So. If we're, if we have questions for staff, uh, we can. Complete that and then we can move on to the applicant or.
One more question from Matthew. H P C, did they review the sign application and have? They did, but and what was their recommendation? Was it the same? It was before A R C reviewed it?
So that has been updated. Um, when it originally went through the process in twenty ten. It ended up being a a combination of the two. Uh, the city does not. Has not done that for some time, and when it comes to sign applications, it is. There there is already a historic preservation plan for. For the site at this time, and so that was considered in staff's recommendation and. It is included in the report as well as to the fact that it is a potentially historic structure. I apologize for not including that in my presentation. There were a few things to go over. Um. Uh, they have not opined on this particular application. They did opine on the previous signage.
Um, the reason why I mentioned that is, um, I'm thinking of Alta Bakery and what we went through with the signage changes there. And we we they kept the feeling of the um historic sign, which. You know, what Mike was saying about the banner sign at the top of the building kind of matching what was across the street. And then, you know, they changed the name of it, but they kept the font, they kept the. Part of the illustration and they kept the um. Part of the wording the same. So I'm just thinking, you know. If H B C had any comment on, you know. Obviously, it's not that historic because it was put up in two thousand and ten. But, you know, Mike was saying how it matched the signage across the street, so. I mean, I could see how it could fit with that context for what was done with Alta as an example.
And if I make further that question, is there anything in the planning process? That suggests a review to be consistent with the historical use of the property?
So. With historic preservation, uh, you know, it's it's a balance between maintaining historical character and not creating faux historic features. So I think you actually made an excellent point earlier tonight, Commissioner Russfield. Uh, historically, this building has not featured signage. At along the roof line, the banner signs is being referred to tonight. Uh, that was the Canary Row um Brewing Company. That was the first uh application of signage and that was in two thousand and ten, so um. You know, there that that would, if there were historic signage on this building, that is something that is often looked at. Uh, to your point, um, Commissioner Blues with Alta Bakery. That historic building did historically have signage in that character on that building. It's now been changed to apply to the present tenant of the building. Um, so the this particular building does not have historic signage features applied to it.
So to that point, there is nothing regarding suggested. Design features or wording in in the existing planning process.
I'm not sure I understand that that question.
Just like we're the topic we're talking on it, somewhere back in eighteen hundreds, nineteen hundreds, whatever. Was there, is there any suggestion that we could try to tail that into put any features? On the outside of this historic zone building?
Yeah, so I think that would be uh viewed as creating a faux historic character on a building.
Silly foe, but if we could tie it into the original building context, that would show the historic.
Sure, that's part of the historic preservation aspect. When there's historic signage that has, we have record of. And then it's being replaced to maintain a certain level of character is not uncommon.
Thank you both.
I have one last question. On our signage ordinance, you said our ordinance is guideline based?
Yes.
And um. So so then it becomes a subjective evaluation when you're looking at signage.
Yes, so the, any signage that comes through. That fits into the guidelines can be approved at the staff administrative level. And if there's any deviation there, whether it be the size of a sign, the type of lighting, then it gets kicked to A R C. And from there.
One last question to answer. With regards to the historic aspect of signage. Isn't like s- uh signage on a wall, a character of Canary Row area? I mean, isn't that kind, I I don't see that. The canary, uh, the brewing company signage is out of character for the area. Do you do this? A R C take that into consideration, the wider um Canaro area when they're looking at signage application?
So that was included as part of the A R C consideration as well. Um, both at the recent hearing and at the one in two thousand and ten. As to what the committee decided at those two different times is is another story.
Okay, thank you.
Matthew, um, when um the commission goes back to deliberations. I would request that um we have the slide showing the findings. The necessary findings displayed so that we can refer to that when we discuss the deliberation.
Okay.
Okay, so uh now it'd be a good time to hear from the applicant.
We do have the applicant on the line. I believe it's the applicant, Brandon Robinson.
Yes, hello again, everybody. How are you guys doing? Yeah, so I'm I'm here to answer any questions. Also, I think there might have been some confusion. Um, uh, back and forth related to historic and nonhistoric the building. Um, and if Matthew could correct me if I'm wrong, the building is not historic. The facade of the building, I believe, is historic. Um, i- if I'm if I'm wrong in what I'm stating, just so the 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 commission understands that that's that's the case, it's the facade. Um, w- we are, first of all, we're, thank you, we are very excited. To be a part of the Monterey community and specifically the Canary Row uh area. Uh, Tipsy Putt is an indoor miniature golf and game uh restaurant. Um, we are in no way associated with the Canary Row Brewing Company in any way, shape or form. And um, we uh, we actually, we reduced, we we agree with everything. Um, relating to the amount of signage that's on the building, we thought it was a little ostentatious. And out of character. In fact, we were surprised at what was previously approved in two thousand and ten. And uh, we reduced the signage from thirteen, um, taking uh the signage down to eight. So I I just want to pre- preface that we are already reducing the amount of square footage that was on the building from thirteen. To eight, the A R C approved four of the eights of the reduction that we. Um, have requested and uh the marquee sign, which is the sign that is most um. Uh, I guess concerning to us for the for the visibility purposes. Is the Canary Row Brewing Company sign that's on the very top of the building. And we wanted to maintain the look and feel of Canary Row and the look and feel of the neighborhood. Uh, by changing it to Tipsy Putt Canary Row, which is the name of our business, um, which was denied by the A R C. Um, the removal of the other signs that A R C has requested. Um, as a business owner, I'm I'm fine with the other reductions or items that they had, you know, they, the corner sign on Wave Street. Um, that's facing uh the the bike trail. That that there there are other signs that aren't as important, but the marquee sign that's at the top of the building that. Really defines the bill, it's been defining the building for the past, um, you know, thirteen years. Um, that that is the signage that that I'm most concerned about. With that being said, I hope that you guys consider the appeal. Um, we we're doing this in the best haste conceivably possible, reducing the signage. Uh, maintaining um a consistent feel and look of the building, and I'm open to answer any questions you guys might might have.
Questions, I don't know. Questions, nope.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Says that on this chart here, the uh. Canary Row Brewing Company sign on this chart here, this would be E two. Hundred and thirty-five square feet.
That's the banner, yeah.
That would be the banner at the top, E two, okay. And this is the one, Brandon, that you think is the most important one?
Oh, so I removed his um permission to talk. You should be able to unmute again.
Yes, I'm here. Yeah, that is the signage that is most critical to our business for certain. And in my personal opinion, again, you guys have your own opinion, but I think it's also the most. Consistent with the building, you know, that's that's currently there. I think it's uh, we're just. Replacing what was there and removing um five of the signs already on top of that replacement. Um, reducing square footage. But yes, that is the our key sign. I feel like. It's one of the things that attracted me to the building in the first place. Um, and that is the signage that we would like to remain consistent with the uh, with with Canary Row um in general.
No questions?
I do have another applicant on the line. Yeah, seems like it. Marco Ospita.
The appellant and the.
Oh, the appellant and applicant.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Uh, you can hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, well, first of all, I wanted to ask Matthew. If he can tell us what was the amount of a square footage that was approved in twenty ten. For Canary Row Brewing Company.
I'm sorry, at this time, this is the moment for you to give a presentation. If you want to direct questions to the commission, you may. But uh, this is not a a Q and A session.
No, I mean, the presentation was done by the owner. I'm here also on the, on a technical aspect. If you guys have any questions regarding signage. I am with the sign company. Uh, I'm the applicant because we do have to pull the permits. Um, but that was uh just a question that that I think needs to be considered tonight as well. Now, we're not only going from thirteen signs to eight signs. But I don't think in the presentation from planning. You guys mentioned the total amount of signage, the square footage that was approved in twenty ten. That's all. Thank you.
That that is the sign applicant representing the appellant. So I believe we've heard from both the appellant and applicant, so we'll need to take it to public comment.
Yeah. May you look, Matthew?
To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at icertchmontreal.org. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four toll free. Then enter the webinar ID one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. No hands are going up in person or in the chambers, I mean, or online.
The approval letter from two thousand and ten does not include a conclusion number. There is a total number of initiative proposed signage, which was six hundred and three square feet of signage. The staff recommendation at that time was one hundred and forty-five square feet. Um, the total allowed was consistent, which is two hundred and sixty-five square feet. And based on what is on the building. I don't have an exact number, but it's very likely above five hundred square feet of signage that was approved at that time.
Above a hundred, you say?
Uh, above five hundred square. Because I think they removed two, at least two of the signs here. And they're only in the.
The one thirty-five, so that's two seventy, you know, and uh, and rising.
Yes. And it included. Uh, A through T of signs.
Um, I think that if if we're making decisions here, we shouldn't be making.
Why?
This needs a continuation.
We're in deliberation, Sam.
There's no, you said there's no further hands raised, correct?
The applicant has raised their hand again. If we let the applicant speak again, we will have to open it up for public comment again. That is up to the check.
You want to do?
Deliberate.
Deliberation.
Deliver it, okay.
Then can we ask for a formal close of the public comment? Can you please?
Public comment.
Thank you.
Matthew, could you please show us the slides for the findings?
Yes, I can. The long one. I I don't have one slide with all three of them. They are three separate slides. But the first one is that the proposal to use.
Why don't we handle one at a time?
Yeah, and objectives.
May I start?
Sure. Please do.
I think it's terrific that we have a new business moving in Canary Row, for one thing. And the city should be rolling out the red carpet and not creating obstacles and. Arbitrary and I would almost say punitive obstacles. Uh, in light of the fact that a sign guideline. Not a standard was approved by A R C back in two thousand and ten that permitted a greater number of. Sign area than what the applicant has proposed here. And then he goes before the A R C and they chop it down even further. Uh, eliminating probably the the most uh. Um, emblematic banner sign of what the building ought to have. And leaving it with a bunch of uh minor. Signs that really are just clutter, uh, and I I it's it's too bad. I I I just don't think this is going in the right direction. Um, I would say that the applicant is has done a good job of reducing the clutter from. The number of signs that were originally on the building from what thirteen or whatever to eight. And I would um support his uh appeal. And right now, it's just a matter of. Melding this with the findings that we're required to give. And given the fact that it's guidelines and not standards, I think there's a lot of flexibility here. So before I really get into the details for findings, I'd like to. See what other commissioners have to say about this.
I support that. Um, the four that have been approved. My opinion is leave the four that have been approved, the sign over the arch door. The sign buried in the falling kegs. The fin sign and the wall sign facing waves. And in addition, not to leave two hundred and sixty square feet on the table. Allow the applicant to put. allow the applicant to put a banner sign that he's proposed on the building.
Or two banners.
The the two banners, the two banners, the two banners in that I I think that the he could do a lot better by painting a kind of stencil painting to make it look kind of faux historic. But I would I would approve adding two hundred and sixty square feet, so he gets his maximum number and putting the two banner signs on the on the roof in addition to what has already been approved.
Sandy, is that then a reduction to the existing number of signs?
No. Yes, it is. It's the same as the number of signs that have been approved by ARC plus two. The two banner signs at the top.
So it would qualify under being equitable under these findings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it also fits to historic nature of Canary Row. I mean, the two banner signs at the top of the building, I think, actually fit that location. I mean, it wasn't mentioned in any of Kent CB's report, but the character of it certainly and the faux design that they've come up with for the decals.
Well, you think it wouldn't have a big sign. It's a surrendering plant for peace's sake.
Yeah, but they're they're gonna have a little bit different application, but it looks like it fits. So I mean, I think I agree with Sandy and 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 the comment that the numbers, I think, match up I with what seems to be a fair solution for that.
Mr. Mike?
My experience with this area only goes back to nineteen fifty's. A long time.
That's a long time.
I remember my grandfather taking me down there because he built some cabinets in some of the offices. And then I worked there in a shop. The buildings all had what they were doing. Monterey Fish Company. All of them had their names on a portola that had the significance of what Canary Row means today. I don't know if there was a building down there in the eighteen forties when California became a Mexican Spanish colony. But we do have buildings around the city of Monterey from that time period. And they all are have a historical context in what we call the building today. We are a tourist city. And I think that the history from eighteen forties to the end of the nineteen forties is what typically people think of as old Monterey. I think we're moving away from that. Trying to name them for a contemporary name goes against that historical context. I don't, I wouldn't object to one of those big banners on one, but if we change it every time the the company changes, we're losing something. I think that's why.
Mr. Chair. So I I can see just by a strong count of where this is going. And although we haven't voted on it yet, but I just want to make a few comments that so I was on the ARC when we approved this thing. I remember I believe it was the Canary Row Company made a very persuasive case that this building was a unique situation with its three prominent sides. And it's they basically talked us into really exuberant sign program on this unique building. And we went along with it. And even those big, I don't, I don't like that banner term. I don't think that's a banner. I don't know who came up with that term. It's just semantics, but it's it's not correct. A banner is a fabric. And anyways, we all know we're talking about those big white.
Yeah.
What appears to be, what what are decals up near the top of the building? So I I think I'll go along with the what I, the direction I hear the committee going, which sounds like a a a withholding of of the appeal, actually. And the one thing that sort of sticks in my craw, which I think is what Mike Bassfield is talking about, is this faux historical notion of those upper signs. I mean, I know it was, I was thinking about this because actually I think the our rules about what we can approve on signs is not content because that's like a speech issue, but it's all aesthetics.
Yes.
But it's funny, in this case, it's like Canary Row Brewing Company looks like it was there a hundred years ago, just because of the semantics of those words. Tipsy putt, whatever, you know, it does not, that that's obviously not new. It's it's not even really faux. It's just the whatever the new business is. So I think that's part of what's bugging me about this, these very prominent top signs for tipsy, you know, the the tipsy white decals along the top, because it's at Canary Row Brewing Company looks old, you know, it's just the terminology. It looks like it could have been old. This does not have any possibility of looking old. It's obviously a new business sign for a new activity. But I I actually liked what Peter said. It's like, I don't know, it's like we're we're being punitive. On Canary Row, that whole area is kind of circus-like anyway. There's a lot going on. You know, I think I I do think there's a really good argument to be made for this building. The basic finding being that this building is a unique situation and and that we can probably, you know, I think that was actually the the findings of the ARC from thirteen years ago was just this is a really unusual building. And yes, that's it.
What would you think? We could make it faux real. We could just put the banner sign Canary Row Company. Then they could change the what?
The content of signage. Yeah, that's a regulation of content, so we wouldn't want to stray into that territory.
That's my problem with with this position that, oh, well, Canary Row Brewing Company up there is okay, but Tipsy Putt isn't because that's a content.
One would depend on how you made your findings. Based on the way you're describing it, I would agree with you. But the commission can also decide that the amount and size of signage is outside of the guidelines and not allow for that reason as well. But yes, I would agree the way that you're describing it would be a regulation of content.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we, if the committee or if the commission, which I sense is is inclined to approve these big white signs up near the top. The, you know, one situation is that the the sign is being penalized in square footage with all of this. You know, the bulk of the square footage of this hundred and thirty-five square feet on each sign is just brick. And and so it's just the way the city has their rules about how they count that kind of a sign.
Right.
If you actually counted the individual letters, it would be, you know, probably like a hundred. Yeah, or or way less than that even. So anyways, that's all I have to say.
One, I'm I'm so sorry to interrupt.
Please.
One, one thing that I wanted to mention was their original, for the Canary Row Brewing Company, the original proposal did not include the established twenty ten there, and that was a condition of approval that was placed on on them to include the year that it was there to not have it be confused in a historic context.
I see, right.
And Tipsy Putt did not, it was not included as part of the condition because it was a much more contemporary wording involved.
Okay. One other comment is that the applicant made the comment that this is not a historic building. This is an historic building.
I can, I can speak to that. It is a contributing historic building to the Canary Row Historic District. It is not specifically zoned as a historic property.
It's not, but it's an historic resource.
It's a historic resource, which is why it has a historic preservation plan.
No more.
Can I make one?
Comment.
To Sandy. When I asked you whether the year proposal was a reduction in square footage from, and you mentioned, maybe I forgot what you said, but I think you said, no, it was the same. But maybe we can reduce it down just a bit so that we can comply with the second finding here. You know, and the applicant has already reduced it from the original from thirteen to eight, which is our, which is a reduction. And so if we went with that same number or less, then it would comply with the second finding.
Yeah. The the reduction was made by the ARC, reducing what the applicant wanted, three eighty-five to eighty. But the allowance was two hundred and sixty square feet. So they could get their four approved signs plus two hundred and sixty square foot of more signs. And so I, you know, the reduction.
Well, and that would be a reduction from the original amount that was even greater than this.
Right. Right.
I would also point out that one of our last quandaries about signage was the the bulldog. And I think the city council, you know, took our careful deliberations and gave them back the all the those flags and everything they wanted, if I'm not mistaken. Am I mistaken?
No, you're not mistaken.
They received the the fully proposed square footage signage with the condition that they raised up the flags.
Right. And so they got talked into a more liberal approval of those the signage and flags there.
In that particular case.
Yeah.
That's correct.
I think a special case can be made for projects that are in the Canary Row area because it is very touristy. You expect to see signs and trinkets and kitsch and and lights and, you know, it it's it's a different kind of a setting than other Monterey urban areas. It's its own unique kind of setting. And maybe, you know, it's it's a situation where I'm glad that these are guidelines and not standards because it does allow us the flexibility to recognize that and to take into account that context.
Two things. Number one, I and it espoused here by people here that have done time on the ARC. I like to support them. And they put a lot of time into this as well. The the second issue is goes to the progress the city of Monterey has made in signage. You may recall starting in the fifty's, they did the internal illuminated signs, and some of them were pretty grotesque. So now you can't do that. So we're we're bringing this whole imaging of a tourist area historic ties versus just an area that people go for entertainment. I want to say, I think that the city does paid a lot of attention to the signage rules that they came up with. And I and there also gives us a lot of elbow room. But I think that we need to keep in mind that you can change, but you don't need to change just for change. I think I think Peter just convinced me in one direction that I had changed on this issue, but I just think we need to exercise caution before we throw out the baby with the bathwater.
Well, you're you're implying that that we're gonna have to tell the ARC that they that they made a mistake.
Yeah, I don't think they made a mistake.
You can't take. It's it's just a difference of opinion.
Subjective evaluation.
Yeah.
And this is our subjective evaluation of what's being presented to.
Yeah, I I agree completely personally. I agree completely. And why do I have an appeal process if you don't have a reactive side?
Yeah.
Well, it seems like signs especially get overturned by boards all the time.
Now, if this, if this, we're talking about, if we were talking about standards, right? And if ARC adjudicated something in in a certain way based on standards, and it came to us, and if we were to uphold the appeal, we would have then create a finding that ARC made in mistake because it was a standard. But these are guidelines. It's more discretionary.
Because everything's going in the direction of objective guidelines. As you know, what we work on for the planning commission.
Where does that leave, that leaves us?
Leaves us that we need to create a create a motion.
Come on, Sandy.
We need to do the findings first, or we.
Well, we need to do the math first, I think.
Let's go back one slide, Matthew, if you can. Sandy, I think that we can create a finding based on the reduction predicated on the fact that the applicant is proposing eight instead of the original, what, thirteen?
Well, wait, let me just get to the lead page here. That's the nightclub. Well, we aren't exactly approving the appeal.
We're upholding the appeal.
That's one of the other things that we can do, make modifications.
We, oh, okay, we can't. So this is just a trial and error. You don't have to record this. So we can move to uphold the appeal.
I would just ask that we not use the word uphold rather than we'll grant the appeal. Upholding kind of gives the impression that you're upholding the ARC's decision.
And modify condition.
Exactly. So you would be, if you were inclined to approve a version of the applicant's proposal, you would be granting the appeal with modified conditions.
Let's try this one out. We are going to grant the, I move to grant the appeal from the Architectural Review Committee Resolution A twenty-three oh three one, approving a sign permit, da 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 da.
Two little signs, projecting sign and one hanging sign.
With the following modifications to allow the applicant to add two hundred and sixty square feet of signage to that which has already been approved. Then that gives him the ability to put that extra two hundred and sixty square feet.
But one thirty-five times two.
Oh, okay.
But you want to say what kind of signage that's going to be, though. You don't want to just give them a blank slate and with the numbers. I think from what you were saying earlier, you talked about the two.
Don't paint it on the sidewalk.
Yeah, but going ahead and having on top of the building is what you were saying earlier.
Yeah.
So that way we could have what you had initially stated, but allow the applicant to be able to replace the what he called the marquee signs at the top of the building with Tipsy Putt Canary Row.
Right.
Is that what, that's that was the impression I had for what you were, you and Peter were initially.
Well, isn't it just simpler to simply suggest that the app, the applicant's original signage proposal that was denied by ARC would be acceptable? I mean, isn't that where we're?
No, I don't think so because there's so many DM signs around that building. I mean, there's.
That included two additional signs, then what?
It is, it's, there's a lot of signs.
There's a lot of signs.
Yeah. What what about that? You know, there are the two big beer keg signs on the corners. What about that one facing the wreck rail? Like, we haven't really talked about that one.
Yeah.
Seems like most of our discussion is about these decal signs up top.
I'm I'm sorry, I have to interrupt. I think technically we do have a motion on the table Commissioner Freeman.
She's just trying out a motion. She didn't.
Can we, okay, then can we just say formally it's died?
Trying out the wording. So it could be a combination of the banner and an additional corner keg sign.
Well, I think if we're gonna make a motion to to describe a a an approved sign program for this building, we should be specific about. we should be specific about that one.
Okay.
And probably all of them. We, we need to say what's in and out. Uh, actually, Peter just suggested we approve the applicant's original, um, A R C application, which is all the signs. I think, isn't that what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
Which is a heck of a lot of.
Which, which is a reduction from what is, was there with the Canary Row brewing. It is a reduction.
I guess so.
It was, it was eight from thirteen.
Yeah.
And even the, even the, remember, even the applicant said he felt that may have been too much because some of the, the signs along the rec trail weren't really needed.
And if we're putting the label across the top, why do we need the one on the bottom right-hand side here? Why do we need the one on the door if we're putting a big banner above?
Entrance.
That's an entrance. It looks like.
An entrance.
With the arched doorways.
Yeah.
Got the arched doorway is the entrance.
Yeah.
Um, Mike's talking about this one here on the side, near the.
Bottom right-hand corner.
Right where the Humvee is.
That's not an entrance.
That's not the entrance. That's the sign.
This is the entrance here.
No, um, this is the entrance, the arched doorway, I think.
Isn't that?
So I will note what's on this.
Oh, yeah.
Tried to, to show the building and the, the brand name, but we don't need extra signs, right? So, uh, you want to throw that in the mix?
I just wanted to note the signs that are on the right side of the screen right now. There's only two of them. It's showing the existing and the proposed.
Matthew, what was the square footage of the signage that the applicant originally proposed that was denied by A R C? What was the total square footage again?
Uh, it's three hundred and eighty-four point two-two square feet.
Three eighty-four. And Sandy, you had mentioned two. What was the number?
Two hundred and sixty is what the sign program allows.
Yeah. Now, is it really up to us to spend the evening trying to pick out which signs need to go and which.
Exactly what I was thinking.
Is that where this is heading?
That's, that's not our, not a, not our.
I, I think we give the applicant a broad overview of what the limit for the square footage is and let him work it out.
All right.
As a modification.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
How much do you want to re- reduce it?
Well, Sandy came up with a number.
So.
Can we do that?
Yeah, that.
I don't know if we can do that.
The, the purpose of going through the sign application process and for A R C to review the application is specifically to do just that, deliberate over which signs are appropriate for this context and in this building.
Can we send it back to A R C with the number? And say we work, we consider or pick which signs that you think.
Uh, you know, in a way, I think that's preferable because we're working with information before us that's kind of scattered. It's, 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 it's not, I mean, I'm looking at these pictures and I, I won't be able to really tell what works and what doesn't work. And I think maybe the best thing to do is to give the applicant guide, a guidance to come back before the A R C with a maximum square footage of signage that the planning commission is recommending.
So that's, that's problematic as well, given that this item's before you want to peel. So referring an appealed item back to the previous hearing body.
Can we continue this so that the applicant can come back with a proposal that would meet what we're suggesting tonight?
That would be.
That would be better, I think.
Yes.
Cause I, I don't, I don't think any of us can really sit here and decide which particular sign should go and which shouldn't, other than a few of them that we all agree on.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking that a half hour ago. We make decisions we shouldn't be making.
Yeah.
You know. So, Sandy.
So make a motion to continue with a specific recommendation.
What was the square footage again, Sandy, that you came up with?
To, uh, two hundred and sixty, two hundred and sixty square feet. So.
And what does that consist?
Are you, I'm sorry, just to clarify, are you going for the linear, uh, frontage of the building? Or, uh, the two hundred and sixty square feet is, uh, the linear frontage of the building is two hundred and sixty-five square feet. So I wasn't sure where the two hundred and sixty was.
Somebody gave me a number that said they were allowed two hundred and sixty square feet. And it turned out that the two banners were a hundred and thirty-five square feet each. And that just seemed to be like, oh, okay. That's perfect.
Two hundred and sixty-five square feet is allowed on the building.
Okay. Well, we continue with two hundred and sixty-five square feet um, being the maximum square footage that the applicant can then repropose with a signage plan that he'll submit back to us.
Is that a motion?
I guess so.
A R C's job.
No, no. No, Cass come back to us.
I'm seeing, I'm looking at A R C approved here, eighty square feet, which is nothing.
That is punitive.
Building.
It is punitive, so I move to continue.
Wait, we already have a motion.
We have a.
Oh, we already have one. Okay.
Yeah, I don't remember it anymore.
And.
To.
Maybe Jennifer.
But you seconded it.
No, um, Peter seconded it. I said it and then he likes it. I think it was.
No motion, but you were.
We're gonna, um, continue the item, um, recommending that the applicant come up with a signage plan for two hundred and sixty-five square feet.
Or less.
Or less. That will, um, he'll present back to us through staff. Considerate.
Regarding noticing and, uh, just from experience working with the applicant, I know they are trying to open semi-soon. If it was to be continued to a date certain, we would not need to renotice, um, for, for this item.
Oh, how about next meeting?
Which would be the fourteenth of November.
Yeah, fine. You should be able to come up with a plan then with you that you can document for us in your presentation.
And plus they'll be only two weeks away and we'll be, we'll remember it.
We guys remember two thousand ten.
Yeah.
There'll be a challenge on that part.
Okay, um.
So, should we vote? Shall we vote on this?
You got a second?
Yeah, we need a second person.
He directed that.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, and just to make sure, do both the motioner and the seconder agree with the timeline of the November fourteenth?
Yeah.
Signing commission meeting. Thank you for confirming. For the vote, we have Chair Dawson.
Yes.
By Sherbluth.
Yes.
Priscilla Brassfield.
Yes.
Priscilla Fletcher.
Yes.
Priscilla Freeman.
Yes.
Priscilla Latassa.
Yes.
Priscilla Littlebit.
Yes.
Thank you. We will continue that item until November fourteenth.
Excellent. Um, okay, so we have, uh, Commissioner comments?
Mister Chair, uh, I, I wanted to mention that, uh, so the governor signed, uh, Senate Bill two seven two, uh, a couple of weeks ago that requires all cities, um, that have parts of their jurisdiction, the coastal zone, prepare a, uh, a sea level rise plan. We have a lot of time. It looks like two thousand thirty-four. Were you aware of this? Um, so, just like all these other state mandated things, you know, Sandy and I met with the city manager. It's funny, they told us to back off until the, we have a coastal plan finished.
Yeah.
But so this is actually going to be something that's, whether or not you believe in this, uh, it's going to, uh, be something that we're going to be required to actually come up with a plan, which I'm glad to see. That's all. Like, like, like.
With no budget.
Pardon?
With no budget, or?
No, no money attached. Yeah. Um, anyone else? Mike?
First of all, I want to thank you guys tonight. A little confusing the time, but thank you. I've been asked about this, the potential for training. Anything on that?
Yes, so I actually had a, uh, there's an event coming up that specifically touches on Secretary of Interior Standards Training. So the kind of, uh, it's more involved in the historic, um, aspect, like the Millsack contracts, the, and historic rezonings that you guys have, um, seen lately. Uh, so I was going to forward that out to the group. Um, still looking into possible training, um, uh, events or training sessions that available. Can I get clarification on whether or not you'd prefer in-person training, um, events or online or both?
I, I would suggest, now, I'd have to take input, both. The idea is to try to keep up with the Joneses here.
Yeah.
What we're doing around the state.
So, okay, so, so kind of to Commissioner Lataz's point, it was something more legislative-based perhaps could be, uh, beneficial?
Anything with housing, um, density issues that we've discussed would be, would be great. Um, maybe stuff that's in South Bay where they've maybe assessed some of these issues already that we could then learn from and bring back.
Sure. Also, uh, I'm happy to forward along, uh, Cal E P A put out a legislative update. Um, it's, uh, they kind of had a session on it, but the, uh, PDF version of the presentation that was provided at that event is available, so I can forward that out to the group as well. So that'll cover all the newly, um, signed, um, laws that touch on everything planning.
But I would also suggest that the chair and new members go to some of these planning commissioner academies. Because the, the, the exchange of information of, of the practices that they collectively use compared to our own is an opportunity shouldn't be missed. The next topic I wanted to ask about is that after our peace disturbance at the joint meeting, I understand the city has been working on what to do. Um, any idea when that's going to occur?
Sure. So they had the, uh, meeting, I believe, is last week or the week prior, um, to discuss a policy on governance. Um, we'll continue to accept, uh, public comment via Zoom as we have tonight. Um, we do apply, uh, different time restrictions, um, depending on the amount of people who are wishing to speak on an item. But yes, that, that was discussed and, and decided.
When should that occur to the different boards?
Uh, it's being applied now.
Thank you. You've heard about it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we, I think it said fifteen minutes total.
That's correct. And that's per item or per, um, public communications received on items, not on an agenda.
So like, if, if we were to get bombed by, uh, uh, under the general public comments, there'd be fifteen minutes that we'd have to, to sit through.
Yeah, it's just, it's all right here.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I saw that and I said, ooh, when did that happen?
Thank you.
Uh, no more comments? How about a planning office update?
Sure.
Was that just it?
No, I got, um, so beyond what's included in the packet, obviously, uh, you'll see there that the uh, follow-up to the October seventeenth city council meeting, uh, the Millsack contract for four-one-four Alvarado Street was approved. Also, the first reading of the historic rezoning for A seven-five Spencer was approved and adopted by resolution. Uh, at the last meeting, it was there with the historic rezoning, there was a conversation surrounding uh, signage and how to kind of make the, uh, historic resources of the city more accessible. Uh, since that time, I, I actually was able to, um, have a conversation with our, uh, the director of libraries, Brian Edwards. Um, and they've, uh, been working on expanding the city's path of history, uh, program and the, that you are all aware of. Uh, also, one of the things that's really cool and interesting, they've been, uh, they've rolled out is, uh, kind of what we were talking about last week was an interactive map. Uh, it's an app you can download on your phone. So I'm looking for, and I'm, um, trying to figure out the best way of kind of demonstrating that to this group. Um, happy to just forward you the link, but I think it could also be a useful exercise of just showing how, uh, how it works and what the information it contains. So it actually evolve, involves a lot of our H one properties already. So it has a lot of potential to be expanded beyond, uh, what's there, um, but the framework already exists today. So just wanted to share that with the group.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then you'll also notice on the planning update, just the tentative agenda for the November fourteenth meeting, uh, potentially looking at, uh, project, uh, two-three-three zero Del Monte Avenue as well as two-one-oh-one North Fremont. The Abbott Hotel, and then, as you know, the item that you just continued tonight. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any, any mass?
It's funny, I was, I was, when I first saw today's agenda, I was thinking, why did they split up into two parts? Now I see why. Good, good call.
Yeah, we would have been in trouble. Um, okay, we've had it. It's, uh,
Levi.
Eight forty. Five out of seven.